About the line.
I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for August 25th. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mike Corilio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondina.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swatz.
Here.
Chris Salatas.
Present.
Dave Westland.
Present.
Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Item number four is public comment.
There was one, I think Robert Suze was signing on the list.
Okay.
Robert? Is it Rob?
It's Rob.
Hi, Rob Suze. I'm representing today the St. John Corn Roast Committee along with the St. John Dyer Chamber of Commerce and the Tri-Town Rotary.
Name and address for the record, please.
9485 Calumet.
Thank you, sir.
Both the Chamber and the Rotary are very grateful for the support of the town. Despite the weather and other circumstances, we had a little bit below average turnout, but we still raised a nice chunk of change for the scholarship fund. This would, we'd like to recognize some of the people from the town that helped us throughout the day. Bob Davis, he always starts off from the Public Works and his team getting the signs posted around the town, bringing barricades and miscellaneous events, miscellaneous stuff we need on the day of the event. Gabe Hernandez and his team, they do the hardest work. They have to go to all the other parks in the town, grab the picnic tables, grab them, lug them around, move them. Those are absolutely no fun to do, and then they get to turn around on Monday and bring them all back. Tyler McLean from the Parks Department, he helped during the event. He did one of the dirtiest jobs, cleaning up the butter out of the dippers. Wayne Pondina has joined us during the day and helped with cleanup. We appreciate that. Chief Flores in the department, we had the stars there who did a lot for us that day. Match and Raider and the officer that pulled the short straw and got the attack by the dog that day. We're going to work a little bit harder to try and get the fire department out there next year, but it's because of all these volunteers and from the Corn Roast Committee and myself, we'd like to thank the town for the continued support for the corn roast and the scholarship money we're able to raise. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your encouragement.
Thanks for the work that you do out there as well.
Yeah, Rob, before you go anywhere, thank you for, you've been doing this for how many years?
I'm going to say this about my 11th or 12th year.
And you have your wife involved, you have your kids involved, and I greatly appreciate that. You've done this for a long time, and if it wasn't for you doing it, and you're the footing and the foundation for that program to keep on going.
Well, Wayne, those are very kind words, but I do have a great committee that I work with year after year. Some of the original people are still there, and I want to recognize that the committee does a ton of work, and it's more than just one individual, but thank you for the kind words.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number five, a new business, Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. I understand we have a representative that would like to address us this evening.
Thank you. My name's Dan Klein. I am the president of the Shared Ethics Commission, and I have some packets for you, if I may.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, sir.
It won't take too much of your time, just want to run through this real quick so everybody knows what's happening here.
Yes, sir.
If you open up the folder on the left-hand side, you'll see the paper says, "What does Shared, CAC, Shared Ethics Advisory Commission do?" And the CAC was formed back in '04 between the city of Crompoint, the town of Munster, and the town of Highland, started at Tebles in a convened meeting of all the councils of those three communities. And it basically was set up to do these items, as you see there, municipal employee training, which we have happening shortly, department head training, board and commission training. Then for the general public, we have a shared, I'm sorry, we have an ethics summit, which is scheduled in October. And then during elections, we have a candidate's ethics action pledge that we send out to all candidates running for office that we ask them to sign, endorsing that they're going to be, promote ethics within their community. St. John's been involved for, I want to say since 2015, 16. They are one of 24 counties, there's counties, there's cities, and there's towns. 24 different municipalities make up the commission right now. Lake County, La Porte County, Porter County, as well as cities and towns within those communities. On the right-hand side of the page, you'll see the code of shared ethics and values that we follow. And then behind it is this page right here, talks about our ethics summit coming up. We do an ethics summit every year. This year, it's going to be scheduled, or it is scheduled for October 29th. Our keynote speaker this year is Violet Sistaveras, who was the president of NIPSCO. She's now the executive vice president, chief experience officer at NiSource. We have keynotes every year where we have usually about attendance of about 300 people at this event at the Avalon Manor in Maryville, Hobart. And we provide breakfast, and everybody's out of here by 11:30, basically. So I would ask you to consider this. On the left side of the paper, membership requirements, there's a stapled four pages. And what happened initially with the town of St. John is with all the different communities, they adopted the interlocal agreement, they enacted the shared ethics code, they paid enrollment and membership fees, and then they appointed a private citizen to serve on the Ethics Commission. There are two parts of the Ethics Commission. The commission members itself, which is a private citizen that the community elects, or appoints, I should say. So that means the town council would appoint a citizen to be part of the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission. The second part is they would designate a public official to serve on the Joint Board of Delegates, which is the fiscal body of the organization. Right now, Michael Griffin, I'm sorry, Michael just stepped down as the head of the Joint Board of Delegates. Her name escapes me from Sherrville, it's taken his spot now, I cannot think of her name. I'm going blank. But anyway, so there's two positions that you have as a town council. You know, what we talked about, what Shared Ethics does with the training and all that, and training is probably our most important thing that we do, that we give to municipalities, or we offer them. There's no charge for the training, but the actual private citizen, commission member, is the interface between what we do as a commission, and they bring everything back to the council or to the city, depending where they're coming from or going to. So I'm here to ask you as a member community, that if you would appoint a private citizen, and I believe one that was appointed many, I shouldn't say many years ago, but a while ago, was Jamie Ward, who was with Suncrest Church. And Jamie, I'm sorry, Jamie was appointed by Hobart initially, when he lived in Hobart. Now he lives in St. John, and of course is at the church. Jamie is also an at-large member, and he's head of our training committee. So Jamie's already, you know, a member of the organization or a member of the commission as an at-large member. So if you have somebody that you have in mind that would meet, we meet every other month, so six times a year normally. We have two different committees, or several different committees that we ask them to be part of. And that would be the Training Committee, or Communications Committee, or the Summit Committee, are the three things that we do throughout the year. Again, that's just it in a nutshell. I don't want to take too much of your time, but any questions that you might have?
Do we need to appoint a citizen and an elected official?
Correct. A citizen goes to the commission, the elected official goes to the Joint Board of Delegates, it's the official title, which is the municipal fiscal body that regulates our budget. They meet two, maybe three times a year as necessary, usually two times a year.
How many members are on the body?
There are 24 members of the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission.
From all the surrounding municipalities?
In fact, this right here, this page right here has them on the bottom. And again, as I said, it's Lake County, La Porte County, Porter County. Cities are Crompoint, East Chicago, Gary, Hobart, Lake Station, Portage, Valpo, and Whiting. Towns are Burn Harbor, Burns Harbor, Cedar Lake, Chesterton, Dyer, Hebron, Highland, Lowell, Maryville, Munster, Ogden Dunes, St. John, Sherrville, and Westville. And right now, we're in communication with Michigan City, as well as City of La Porte. So this keeps growing as we progress here. But that's who the members are, so when we meet, there's maybe 20, 22 members that gather every other month to go over what the needs are of that meeting. So again, you just have two appointments. One for the commission member itself, which is a private citizen, and the second one would be a public official, an elected official, as the Joint Board of Delegates. And again, they meet maybe twice a year, maybe three, but normally only twice.
Okay. Any other questions? And I would like to kind of take this under advisement, read through the material, and come back and make a decision at next month's meeting if we're okay with that.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a great day.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay, item B is, consider a 12-month agreement with Archive Social to provide archiving services for the town's social media accounts. Chris?
So this is a quote from, I believe, our IT director, Jason, what looked into three or four different companies that provide this service, and this is kind of the one that he felt best fits the town and its needs. We both met with them jointly and asked questions. The service would be, the town has many multiple social media accounts, and this would provide a service to archive any of the postings and comments on any of those posts that the social media pages would take, and archives them in case anybody decides to ask the town for a FOIA request for any of those comments or postings that were made on our social media pages. Jason, you could maybe elaborate if I missed anything?
No, you've covered it quite well. The reason I, one of the reasons why I chose Archive Social is because it also has a bigger brother component called JustFOIA. That is a, basically a website where you can go to fill out your FOIA requests electronically instead of having to fill them out on paper and pen. That is completely optional, it is not a part of the current proposal. It's just something to think about in the future if you want to move in that direction.
Is it like a search engine?
No.
No.
So this, basically, you're talking about two different things. One is this is going to protect us from FOIA requests to do some of the work for us on our social media accounts. And the second thing is that all FOIA requests then would go through this process, as you're saying?
Yeah, the JustFOIA website would handle all FOIA requests, so this way, they could be automatically routed to the appropriate department, depending upon what it was.
What does that cost a month, or a year?
I didn't even look at that. I was just concentrating on.
Hours a month.
It's not part of this product?
It is not a part of this.
Oh, okay. Okay. Questions? You see the quote in front of you, it's almost $5,000, $4,788, and that is for one year. I think this is something that could protect us for FOIA requests. Mr. Westland, your thoughts?
It is, I don't know that it's a protection for FOIA requests, and I'd want to hear more about that second phase before I gave any opinion on the second phase, but as social media becomes more and more prevalent, as people feel more and more comfortable to use that platform to express their ideas, it's only a matter of time before a litigation involves something on social media, and it would certainly be a nice tool to be able to go back and see the history of the comments and not have to, like, my limited experience with subpoenaing social media platforms for historical information is not good. You kind of got to drag it out of them, and it's a fight. So if there was a way to be able to get that information more readily at hand, I think that would protect the town potentially. And I think it's only a matter of time before litigation results from social media in general.
So basically, your opinion, no, no, just your off-the-record opinion is that it's probably worth looking at seriously to go forward?
My, I'll go on the record, I think that the $400 a month to archive the social media stuff is worth it. I mean, I didn't.
I gathered that from what you said.
I didn't compare other platforms or other providers. I'm assuming this is the most competitive quote, but some form of archiving of what is put on social media is a good thing.
Was this archiving what the town of St. John puts on the town of St. John, like, Facebook page, or? Would it be all?
It would record every comment made by every single person posting to any town, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, any social media platform that we register with Archive Social.
So that would include Parks, the Parks Facebook?
Parks Department, the volunteer fire department, the police department, every town, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and I'm sure I'm forgetting some. As long as we, basically what will happen is if we sign up, Archive Social will send links out to all of the administrators of the various pages. They will have to click on the link, which will then give Archive Social the permissions necessary to archive the postings. So I'm, the only time you will contact me for this entire process is when a FOIA request is received and I have to retrieve the results. I won't see the postings, I won't interact with them in any way, shape, or form. I will just handle any FOIA requests for the social media stuff.
Okay. Any other questions, ideas, comments?
Yeah, quick question. So this is for one year. This sounds like something we're going to need into infinity until the world ends, or something like this. So do they offer some type of program where it's a two-year, five-year, where there's a discount? Since it looks like we're going to need this on an ongoing basis.
I'd like to try just for a year to get our feet wet, and then after a year, we'll try a multi-year contract. At this point, I think they would only give a three-year lock-in for price. Anything beyond that, they don't do.
So do you know that as this information is accumulated, then you have it?
No, it's on their server.
Their server.
And the only time I would access it is if there was a FOIA request.
So at the end of the year, if we decide we do not want this, or we want to go with a different company, is that information ours, or is it theirs?
It's ours, we can have it digitally downloaded.
Okay, thank you. That's important. Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Archive Social agreement authorizing a town manager to sign not to exceed $4,788.
For a year.
For one year.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you, Brian. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? It is passed. Five to zero. Item number C. Consider Resolution 21-08-25, which is a resolution adopting Lake County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chris?
So Fire Chief Laduke brought this to my attention. The Lake County passed their Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, I believe in 2019 is when they adopted their ordinance. The town did participate in the creation of that plan. I believe Jason was our liaison to that group. The town's own disaster plan references the county's Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, so it would be a good idea to adopt it formally into, by this resolution, as well as there are some grants that the town could apply for through the Department of Homeland Security that need to reference our own disaster plan, and likewise, the Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. So I would ask that the town consider adopting by resolution the Lake County's Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider Resolution Number 2021-08-25, adopting the Lake County Mutual Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay, thank you, Mike, is there support for that?
Does anybody need to sign that?
Second. Councilman Schilling, the council would sign it themselves.
I was only going to make sure that the town manager didn't have to sign it to the fire chief.
We're good. All right, so motion by Mike and supported by Mike. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number D, consider Resolution 2021-08-25A, resolution declaring uncollectible bad debt, St. John ambulance billing in the amount of $237,181.19. Mr. Salatas?
So this is, my understanding is done biannually by the town, so we're just a little behind on getting it this year. We write off the uncollectible debts, which are generally a result of us billing Medicare and Medicaid, because they have a set rate that they only pay out. So anything over that, they will not pay out, and the town has to write off as bad debt. So I believe this was done potentially once this year already by the town, or at least has been done twice last year. So the reason that it may look a little higher this year than you're used to is because the town had raised its EMS billing. So again, Medicare and Medicaid doesn't care that the town raised their fees, they will only pay a set rate, so this is a result of that. So again, I would simply ask that the council approve writing off the bad debt.
Questions or comments? Okay, so is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-08-25A?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number E, consider Resolution 2021-08-25B, which is a resolution authorizing David D. Westland and the law firm Westland &amp; Bennett, PC to execute documents related to the purchase and/or sale of real estate on behalf of the town.
So this is a resolution Dave drafted up for us. We are in the process of selling NIPSCO back, some of their property along a bike trail for one of their projects, and it's my understanding that this would authorize him to execute the closing documents and those documents necessary to transfer the property over to NIPSCO for this project for the year. Dave, you can correct anything I may have misspoken on.
No, that's, it's accurate. And it doesn't have to be me, it could have been like Chris, but then I'd have to schedule closings around his schedule and things like that, and most towns just authorize me to do it. And obviously, I'm not going to sign anything until I send it to Chris first, but it allows this closing, and I think on the NIPSCO property, they want to close it next week, Monday or Tuesday before September 1st. So I'll get the closing documents, send them over to Chris. Once he and I talk about them, and he gives me the go-ahead, I'll sign everything. But the title company needs this resolution, and they put it in their file so they know that I'm just not willy-nilly signing stuff for the town.
What was the final price? Would there be a time limit on this resolution, like yearly?
It's an annual resolution, and it would, they want one every year, the title company does. So we just haven't sold any property this year, so it's the first time it came up.
No, the only reason I say is, you know, as time goes on.
Yeah, no, it's this year's resolution, they're going to want a resolution next year as well. So, you know, if somebody else is sitting here next year, you can have them be your signer.
He's trying to get more bang for his buck?
What kind of money came out of this, Dave?
I haven't seen the settlement statement yet. I'll probably get it tomorrow or Friday.
Ballpark.
But, I mean, was this, I don't, you were asking me off the top of my head, the purchase price was like 12, wasn't it?
I figured it was right around there.
Yeah, so 12,000, you take away some of the closing costs, you're probably going to net 11, 10.5, something like that.
So does this require a motion and authorize a signature for Chris?
Yeah, I mean, that way Chris can just sign it and send it.
So do we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-08-25B and authorize town manager Chris Salatas to sign?
So moved.
I got Brian on that, and Mike for support. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. That is five to zero. All right. Item F, Ordinance 1739, which is an ordinance amending Ordinance 1738 and 1720 to pay bonuses to the town employees who provided services for the fireworks celebration on July 3rd, 2021. Chris?
So hopefully, this is the last time we're addressing this. We gave bonuses for the employees that worked. However, there were two employees that were missed, because one was a volunteer firefighter, and the other one was a reserve police officer. So this resolution will give them a bonus for working that day and acting as a part-time employee, so they will receive $60. So it's just two employees. And it also stipulates on the back, per the clerk treasurer, what fund they're being paid out of.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Nope.
So do I have a motion to consider Ordinance 1739 on first reading?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Wayne, support by Mike, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Since that is unanimous, can I also have a motion to adopt Ordinance 1739?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Wayne. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item G, Ordinance 1740, which is an ordinance amending Ordinance 1719, authorizing an increase in the escrow fee for residential and commercial buildings and structures.
So in talking with our Director of Building and Planning, as well as our building official, we are having issues with some builders walking away from the escrow and not receiving, or not turning in their as-bills to the town. And we also had some issues with commercial property, commercial property owners doing the same thing in very recent history. So in order to encourage them to get the as-bills to the town, we would like to increase the escrow amounts to encourage them to do so. The town, this is money they would get back, so this is not money the town would keep unless they fail to complete what they're supposed to complete. And it's not our intentions to try and collect this money necessarily. What we really want is the as-bills. As-bills are necessary for future reference and to make sure that they're accurate, so that way, future employees, when they have to go back and reference the as-bills, they know what was supposed to be there and how it was built. So you have two here, proposed to go from $1,000 to $5,000 for residential, and from $2,000 to $7,000 for commercial.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Well, I don't know what raising the escrow ultimately does, because they have to get occupancy before they get their escrow back anyway. So if they're, if the town is giving them occupancy, they shouldn't be giving it to them if they don't have all these things done in the beginning. So raising it, the town can still give them occupancy, and it's still not being completed. I don't know why we're giving occupancy to buildings that aren't complying.
I think that's because we have a lack of workers, Mike. There was a buildup, I don't know if Chris would know, maybe 50 houses that Mick or somebody had to go and check out the final grade and everything. So a lot of the contractors, the people are moved in, hey, you got to come back. They already got changed, they already got the change of occupancy, and they just say, hey, you got $1,000 of my money? It's going to cost $3,000? See ya.
Yeah, but that's the town's fault for giving them the occupancy. I don't care if it's $1,000 or $5,000.
Winter time, and that interferes. In other words, contractor can't finish outside doing the final grade if there's snow on the ground.
You might be messing up somebody on their loan, too. They got so much time for their loan, and if we hold back, I mean, I'd rather do it this way, and that makes the contractors, I mean, all the contractors got to suffer here, because some don't want to follow the rules.
I don't think anybody's suffering, I just.
I think Mike brings up a good point. So is there ever a good reason to give somebody an occupancy permit and not give what you're asking for, to, you know, finally, and then come back and get their deposit back, whatever this is paperwork? Is there some reason not to do those together?
I think you, before you give them occupancy, they should have the things that they need completed, completed.
Makes sense, that makes sense to me, but I'm sure there's.
Because if they walk away from their.
Because if they walk away from their thousand, they'll walk away from their. But in the case of final grades, if they move in or final occupancy, they want to move in December 1st. And you, you know, there's a foot and a half of snow on the ground, they can't final grade it until spring, which is March or April. So therefore, how can you give them an occupancy permit if you want to follow through with your thinking and say, you can't have an occupancy permit because your final grade isn't done? And that's the problem they're facing in planning and building. And the inspector goes out there and goes, the final grade's needed. And they go, screw it, it's only $1,000, bye.
Right, and then the sod's already down and they can't change nothing.
Right, and they can't.
So what are you going to do? Because that's how far we're behind.
No, no, you're.
Let me understand, so, so am I missing something here? So I can understand that if a house gets done in January and there's snow on the ground and the people want to move in and there's some kind of physical reason why they can't do a final grade, that you would give an occupancy permit and then, but I, I'm not, in the building department, does that situation exist?
A lot.
Yeah, that does exist. So there is a good reason why this may happen.
So, so for the guy that's doing the inspection, he, he's supposed to check the valve box if there's one out there, the B-box, everything, elevation. And there's, there's so many, we're building, last year, we built 411 houses. We couldn't keep up. There was a backlog of doing that, that final, you know, inspection of the property.
And as a result, the contractor said, $1,000, I don't need it, bye.
I can understand them doing that, so.
So what, since you're closer to this, Wayne, what's your recommendation on this?
Well, if you want to defer it and have some more discussion, discussion on it, fine. But I've seen the stack that they had to go out and inspect. By the time they get there, the sod's down, they can't make somebody tear up the sod and rebuild the yard. I know what Mike is saying, he makes a good point too. But somebody has to get there and, and look at all that stuff.
So then, now I'm confused a little bit. So if they have the sod down and there's some error with this, so, so they get an occupancy permit and they put their sod down, this happens and then they don't come in, they, final.
That inspection might be months later.
And they haven't found the B-box and all the rest to approve that it's actually acceptable. And it's under snow, how the heck are you going to see it?
Well, I think we need to do a better job of getting out there and doing the inspections instead of just raising the.
Okay, yeah, I, I think your idea to defer this is a good idea because we need, we not only need to figure out if this is going on, but we also need to figure out the solution to it. The solution to it isn't to just to raise the fee or the, or the permit. The solution is to figure out how we're going to get these things approved and inspected on time so that we're not slowing up these contractors, so.
Well, I would suggest maybe we have a meeting with Sergio. One or two of us, or have Chris meet with Sergio and see what kind of resolution we can get on that.
All right, so can I have a motion to defer this?
I'll make a motion to defer.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose say nay. That is deferred. Item H, ordinance 1741, which is an ordinance amending ordinance 1696, establishing a personnel policy and procedure manual for our town employees. Chris?
So this was discussed at our department head meeting. Beth had brought this up to us, there's been in her office, I believe, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, some issues with clarification as to how vacation is calculated and paid out. So this would help correct that. And Beth, I will turn it over to you for better clarification.
It's actually fixing two things, the chart listed, it was kind of just a mistake in the years, it went, instead of 19, if you're looking at, let me look at the ordinance. Hold on a second. These are back, front and back, right? Okay. So if you look at section, the second chart, vacation allotment following the calendar year of one year, of the one-year anniversary, it went 15 to 20 and then 20 again. So it's fixing that, okay, because it should be 15 to 19 and then 20-plus years gets 30 days. There was, employees were having some issue with that. And the way in which it was worded, it needed some clarification on if you were to separate employment today, how you were, that you are not going to be paid out service for an entire year, that it would be on a proration. Okay, so the language was a little bit.
Yes.
It was, so we've had several employees that have retired or moved on during the calendar year and one instance where somebody read it in a way that was inconsistent with the intent. And so in light of that instance, we thought it best to clarify the ordinance so that we don't run into that situation again.
Okay.
So it's clarifying that if you work three months out of this year, you will be credited vacation on your payout for the three months you worked, not the entire year. One employee thought, because they worked one day or sometime in the calendar year, that they should be credited for that entire calendar year.
Okay.
Even though they didn't.
Yeah, so the encouraging thing then, and I know where that employee got it from was from the county because the county does it based on January 1st. And you see all the time, employees at the county retire or quit like January 2nd. Because as soon as January 1st hits, they get their full year's worth of, right, vacation. And then the county is left and theirs is even screwier, where they've got to hold that spot open while the person is using up their vacation time. But this kind of stops that from happening, right? So that if you quit the first day after your anniversary date, you're not going to get this whole year.
You drag it out for four more weeks.
Well, and then, yes.
And then quit.
But then you're credited for those four weeks.
Then you only get a month's worth, you're still going to get the whole year.
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. All right. Questions or comments? So do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1741 on first reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Wayne. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Since that is unanimous, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 1741?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike, support from Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. That is approved five to zero.
I, I would like to add, Mr. President, this will not, I know some employees were a bit nervous that we were, or you, were doing something to like take away. It's not taking away. Any regular employee who's separating employment understands the intent of how the personnel policy was written. It was just one person who.
I really think it clarifies what the intent and, and the historical practice of the town has been since, for a long time. And one person got creative and it was based on her experience at the county that I mentioned and was able to, you know, kind of craft an argument around that. And so this ordinance merely clarifies the intent and the historical practice.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Beth. All right. Item I, consider ordinance 1742, which is an ordinance amending ordinance 1030, I'm sorry, 1083, establishing various fees and costs associated with the issuance of annual business licenses with the town. Chris?
So this is one I'll probably ask to be deferred, but I would like more, I would like some direction from the council. I was asked to do some investigating and to see how much a business license costs us. On average, a new business license coming into, you know, the building department where the application starts. And from start to finish for a new business application runs roughly about two and a half to three hours. So a $25 fee does not necessarily cover all of our employee time for two and a half to three hours. And then there was also an issue with the original ordinance having a violation in place that had a range from $10 to $50 per day for every day that a business owner did not renew their business license. I don't think it prudent that the town leave a range open for staff interpretation because that leaves openness for anyone to interpret it however they want. So setting a set fee or a set number per day, however the council decides or wishes to proceed, we would just like to get that clarified so there's not a range. And then again, if there's a desire to raise the fee, to give us direction on that amount.
We have the, it's, it's going to be raised to $75 a year annually?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an issue with that.
With that, you're just breaking even.
Do they, do they settle what it's going to be for the daily charge, is that in this?
No, so right now, the way this reads is just $10 for HR, for, for a late fee.
Needs to be rewritten.
So we definitely need to.
Can we just come up with a late fee right here and pass this, or?
Well, we could.
I, I would, I would like to add some stuff to that too. If, if Chris is coming in at town and there's a, say this building's vacant or this whole room is vacant, he wants to put a business in here, it's Chris's card shop. Okay, I want to have a fire inspection, electrical inspection, I want to see what you're doing. But Chris can move out and it can be your nail spa. Now, a nail spa, you have to have, you want to protect your, I'm just using nail spa, but they got chemicals.
Why am I doing nails?
Huh?
What's wrong with nails, I like nails.
Well, you're using chemicals. Now, your chemicals, you don't want to backfeed into your water system, so it's our job to protect our water supply. So if Chris comes in, we have an inspection, if it's, even if it's a brand-new building, we want to, we want to protect our water supply, we want an RPZ in there. Now, the next time when you go to do your nail spa, it's already there, we don't have to argue with you. But we want, you know, and this was, this was brought out by somebody in, in building and planning, that we're not doing that. And there was a, somebody that came in, $25, here's your license, now you can go do what you want. But they needed RPZ, they needed different things to protect our water supply, that wasn't done. With the inspections, that's great because other towns do it and we're protecting ourselves. What happens if you have a warehouse and you want to store fertilizer? Fertilizer can blow up, you can have a problem. So that's what we want to do. One of our inspectors was doing a fire inspection on a place, there was stuff blocking the door and that's a fire hazard. So you need that and relax on that. And that's, that's what I want to throw in there. And if, if we have to defer this, that's fine, but I would like to get, you know, more comment maybe from building and planning.
So a fire inspection would be the fire department?
Right.
The other stuff you're talking about for the backflow, that would be building and planning?
That, that would be building and planning.
So are you asking then that each year, that those two?
Well, every year, there probably should be a fire inspection.
I agree with that.
And then that teaches the fireman, hey, I know where this is, I know where that is, I know what's in the building. But when they first start out, we've had places that said, oh, we're just going to do this. And you, we walk in there, they're knocking out walls and everything else. And that's not fair to the other business owners that, that went through everything and did it the right way.
So are you saying, would you like some kind of different type of fee for different kind, type of businesses?
Well, no, it'd be a, one, one, for business license, it'd be one fee. And then you have to pay for a fire inspection, a plumbing inspection, if it warrants that, and go, and go through that.
Can we do, I, I don't have any problem with what you're talking about, but I'm wondering if we could do a different fee for an initial license? To make sure that everything gets inspected, everything is the way it's supposed to be. And then the annual renewal maybe doesn't necessarily need to be as much. I still agree, we need a fire inspection, but we should be doing that anyway.
Right, plumbing inspection, all that, you want to see what's going on in the building. I mean, we're not doing that.
For year one, for the initial.
There's some, there's some business that moved in an industrial area, if there's no business there, I'm here. They're doing stuff, I walked in there. There's no record other than that they were going to move in.
Okay, so we've got some catch-up to do, but I, I like the idea of doing an initial that's higher because we have to do some work. But then I think the renewal maybe can just be a lower amount, maybe stay with the, yeah, I'm not sure.
The fire inspection might come annually, depending on how, how many people they have.
The part I have a problem with is section two. If a business fails to apply for an annual business license or renewal before the first day of January, they should be fined $10. And it's like, there's no motivation to get a license. So it doesn't need to be daily, I mean, I'm happy with a monthly, I'm not trying to penalize business owners.
No, but.
But if it's only $10, there's no motivation for me to even get a license this year.
But I asked that question today and I was told that the businesses can start in November, I think, paying. So they're, you know, and I said, okay, that throws Mike, I had the same question.
I know, but just say, so you've got your business going, Wayne, and it's January 1, you need to get your license for the year. Maybe you got it in November or December, that's great. But if you didn't get it in January, by January 1, now I'm going to charge you $10 more, penalty. And if you don't get it in February or March, or even all the way out to the next December, it's still only a $10 charge and there's no motivation, there's no teeth in this thing, so I think.
I think, I think we need to.
Like Miraval, like there's, they have some licenses in Miraval where it's $5 and the, and the late fee is 50.
And you got to consider that.
So I think we got some work to do on this.
Right.
Let's give Chris some feedback and come up with a different option.
And if you look back at ordinance 1083, it was 31 years ago that that was put into place. So it's been that way for 31 years.
I think there was a.
All right, I'll make a motion to defer if you want.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is deferred. Okay. To reports and correspondence. Wayne, anything?
Yeah, we had minutes from last month, we deferred the minutes for June 23rd. I wanted some words in there, I don't know whatever happened to that, if we have to ask who's ever doing the minutes to redo that. And then whatever happened to E, the Dodge Charger that we were gonna, we deferred that too. And, and that's old business, but I didn't want to interrupt Mr. Klein when he was talking, so.
Yes, so I, I can speak to that. I did talk to Chief Flores about that particular vehicle. He did inquire back to, I forget which community in Illinois it was, that was interested in it, Linwood. They had not gotten back to him with a price. So I, and, and as of Tuesday of this week, they have not gotten him to a price. So he's still going to wait, but I think he's going to probably pursue selling it on the state auction site as they have with the ambulance that the town had auctioned off to dispose of before. So if he doesn't hear back, he'll probably just go that route. But they did also get a scrap value of the vehicle of $1,500. So that's where that's at right now.
All right, and then we, we still got to look for the minutes for June 23rd. And then the other item that I got is September 23rd is Support Law Enforcement Day. And I'd like to bring that up, that maybe we can announce that and support that. Because I think our next meeting is on the 22nd, right before that, so it's kind of one day to announce it. So if we can do that, that would be great.
We could definitely maybe have Dave draft up a resolution supporting that and then put that on our, you know, we can certainly make a post on our website.
That would be great.
That would be good.
They have one from last year.
Oh, do they? Okay, good.
Perfect.
Okay, yeah, and the minutes will be forthcoming.
Yeah, okay, that's good.
We don't have any minutes for this one.
Unfortunately, yeah, the, there's, the individual that does our minutes hasn't worked in the last couple of weeks. So she had some issues that has rendered it, yeah.
Do they go back to school like all the workers at McDonald's?
Not quite.
Pretty much.
Wayne, one thing, and to all you guys, one thing we really haven't done in, in reports and correspondence is talk about the other departments. So liaison to Park Department, liaison for Water and things like that. This would be kind of the time to let everybody know what's going on with them. So I'm going to, I'm not going to ask you to do that right now, but I'm going to finish down the line.
Going to give me time to talk, I, I mean, we can stay here. Somebody go out and buy a coffee and donuts?
But I would, I would like that as part of this because just, just a brief update on what's going on. But I would, I would like that as part of this, because just, just a brief update on what's going on in everybody's department.
Well, I think Parks Department, the, we've done a, a lot of mulch. If you look at Prairie West Park, Prairie West Park, Gabe has, has done a lot of, a lot of work with the summer help, they cleaned up that pond a little bit, the reeds. Gabe was on one of them, was on the fire department, the, what do they call it, a tower, up eighty feet near, whatever, putting bulbs in for softball. The parks are, are looking good. The tennis courts got redone this year. We are, we're gonna hire somebody else in the Parks Department with sanitary, things are going along pretty good with that, skater system. That's, we had a meeting on that, they're working on that. The water main on, on forty-one, I hate the word conflict, but they got more conflicts, and I got conflicts with their conflicts, but it's, it's a mess. But the forty-two-inch line now is getting buried by the state. That should be done in, in a few weeks. That road's gonna probably be closed, or they're not gonna get it open fully until probably next year, from what I hear, but that can change. Ninety-sixth Avenue, he, he gave you a, a report on that. There's, we ordered more meters, hopefully we got enough meters, there's gonna be a shortage, maybe, so we should be okay with that.
So I talked, and the reason I ask, because I, I talked to Tyler yesterday, and he mentioned that Founder's Park is gonna be major work done, starting on that next week, and that should be open soon.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna start, I didn't, I didn't know that they were gonna do major work on it, but they did...
They said they were gonna start on the boardwalk next week, and the playground equipment should be in next week.
Okay, yeah.
Be delivered next week, I'm sorry, not next week.
Yeah, I didn't know that, so I, I apologize.
I just talked to him, and he just gave me an update on that. He also said the skateboard park was, they're just about ready for groundbreaking.
Yeah, they're getting, they're getting, their, their crew that's gonna work on it is in New York right now, so...
And they're looking at like a mid-November for a completion?
I think so.
I didn't know that it was gonna be that quick, but that's good, I like that.
It depends on what happens in New York.
Okay.
So, everybody's looking forward to it, it, it should be nice. Everybody, Tyler put a lot of work in it, he puts a lot of extra time into what he does. You see him, if you're out in, out towards Crown Point, he's going home, it's seven o'clock at night, he's, he's just coming from work, so he does a, a, a great job. Gabe does a great job. Everybody that's been in Parks, our, our summer help has been great, all the kids that helped has been phenomenal.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I think it's kinda important that the town people know what's going on.
Give me a microphone and let me talk.
Mike?
I'll report for you next month, hi.
Okay.
Didn't have anything ready for me.
Nothing else for reports and correspondence?
No.
He can't just wait, like, wait.
'Cause then I'd be wrong and drawn out.
Oh, come on, man.
Mr. Realio?
So in our Economic Development Committee, our Economic Development Committee, you guys were kind enough, we appreciate you guys approving the facade program. Think that will be a nice addition to giving some facelifts to some, some properties in town, so I appreciate that. We're also moving forward with our waterfront district, we were, we were moving forward with that today in the committee. We're excited about that, which will eventually, will be a nice entertainment district for St. John. You know, where we'll have nice restaurants and hopefully nice walking paths, and, you know, it'd be, that's great, so we're, we're moving forward that project.
Okay. Brian?
Basically, you can see all the developments for me to sit here and run through the list, it's quite extensive. I'm looking...
Just looking for highlights.
Well, here's the highlight, we've got a heck of a lot of houses coming into St. John. And basically, we're going to probably somewhere, if the economy doesn't get shaky, we could hit four hundred and fifty to five hundred houses this year, 'cause it's on track. We had some, I think it was three ninety-four as of the end of July. And we only built four hundred and eleven last year, so what does that tell you?
There's gonna be more.
Tells me everybody tried to get in under the impact fee deadline.
Well, no, surprisingly, the impact fee is starting to generate revenue. But there's, there's so many developments on the drawing board that haven't been approved, haven't been recommended, haven't really come in for final plat. Three Springs is gonna come in for final approval. There's a couple new developments, the ones on Parish, Astoria. It's just, it's just a lot of work in progress.
Okay.
And the folks in town keep saying, well, put a stop to it, and they don't realize the legalities involved. You can't stop building, if you own it, you can build it, as long as you follow the rules. So that's where we stand.
Okay, thank you. Beth?
Nothing.
Okay.
Wow.
Chris, anything else?
So in the request to purchase, you guys will see a South Shore Clean Cities there. Chief, Fire Chief La Duke went to a South Shore Clean Cities annual meeting for me, and came back with an amazing opportunity, a grant opportunity, one that you don't find very often, it was a hundred percent no-match. With a little caveat, we, we do need to be a member of the group, so they can write the grant for us. The membership that we have in front of you is a thirty-five-hundred-dollar annual membership. It gives us ten hours of grant writing from them, as well as a plethora of other benefits of being a member. This group is housed in St. John, it's a statewide organization now, and they handle all the federal green energy, clean energy, alternative fuel grants out there, as well as the, the company that kind of works under them also runs Wisconsin's clean energy, clean cities program as well. So they've got over a decade of experience doing green energy grants and things like that for the federal government, they work well with NERPC. So I would really appreciate if we do that, so that way we can get the grant applied for. It's a fifty thousand dollar grant that would come in and would be used towards a police, or, sorry, not police, fire vehicle that we have slated to be replaced for next year anyway, so it would save our budget fifty thousand dollars for next year with a small thirty-five-hundred-dollar...
Investment.
Investment. Outside of that, I would just like to state that Bob Velois's last day is probably gonna be Friday this week, after twenty-two years in the town. So I'd just like to, I only had the pleasure of knowing him for about two months here, but he's a, what I've, the time I've had with him, he's been a pleasure and a wealth of knowledge, and we're certainly gonna, you know, it's gonna be sad to see him go. However, as Wayne mentioned, we do have some new employees starting, so it's nice to see some new fresh faces and get some open positions filled in the town. We have a Parks and, Parks employee starting who does, who does have his CDL, so that'll be nice to help cover our winter plowing, as well as we had two Public Works employees that will be starting by the end of the month. One has already started and is working with Bob Velois right now to try and capture some of, some of his knowledge and hopefully take over for him when, when he does depart. And then I would just, I would also like to thank the Public Works employees and, and the clerk's staff, and anyone who's had to deal. Building and planning's been a little short-staffed lately, due to some employees being out, due to illness and other related things. So I'd just like to thank everybody in the town hall for kind of pulling together and making sure that we keep that department up and running as best we can on, on a shoestring employee-staff-wise. And then one last request I would have, just of the citizens, and this is coming from the police chief. We've been having a lot of people speeding in front of Clark Middle School specifically, kind of like just before school's starting, and it's very dangerous conditions, and we just really ask you to, to slow down, it's a school zone. The town's gonna take some steps to try and bring some more visibility to the area, so people know that it is a school zone, and you need to slow down when, when kids are present and crossing guards, et cetera. So we're gonna do some additional striping there, we're getting some additional equipment for our staff that does handle crossing guard-related things. And then if that doesn't solve the problem, we're, we've got a couple additional pieces of equipment we're looking at purchasing that may help. Again, draw visibility.
Radar guns?
I believe our, our police department already has radar guns, but I believe the equipment they're looking at are solar-powered, flashing yellow lights. They're, they're quite expensive, but if the, the less expensive alternatives that we identified don't help, we're prepared to invest in the equipment necessary to, to stop speeding traffic.
I, I've always found that one of the best ways to stop speeding traffic is to have an officer close by, and you see that black and white sitting there with a radar gun, that tends to slow them down quite a bit, so...
The chief has had the radar speed sign in the area, as well as he has increased traffic, or patrol officers in the area, too. So we're, we're doing everything we can.
Okay, so then going back to the South Shore Clean Cities, you're looking for action on this?
Yeah, so it'll be in the request to purchases, so as long as you approve all the requests to purchases.
Okay, but I wanna, okay, so then before we get to the request for purchase, since this was brought up, I wanna put this on the table and, and have that discussion on this Clean Cities, South Shore Clean Cities membership. Have you guys all had a chance to look at this, or familiar with it at least?
Yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Yeah.
Okay, my question is, are there any strings attached to this which are gonna make us regret membership later? I mean, anytime you get into some environmental things, a lot of times, I, I get a little bit worried, so that's why...
Fair enough. As far as joining the group for membership, no, it's an annual membership, so if we, we aren't interested in applying for any of their grants next year, we can pull the plug and not be a member next year, or, or anytime in the future, since it's an annual membership. Any quote-unquote strings that would be attached would be within the grants themselves that the federal government puts out, so we'll just have to... We're not gonna apply willy-nilly to any grants, and we're gonna have to just be cognizant and read what we're applying to and what the requirements are, and what the federal government is going to require of the town, before we go ahead and accept those grants.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have comment on this?
The only thing I have, what it is, you're gonna spend thirty-five-hundred dollars to maybe apply for a grant, is it just, should we just buy the vehicle? And not, because you can spend the thirty-five-hundred dollars and not even get the grant to purchase this vehicle.
Correct. So we, we do like our odds in applying, last year, they had the same grant, and out of the twenty applicants, they had fourteen funded to fifty thousand dollars each. So the odds are pretty good, or a little more than pretty good. But certainly that is, you know, it is a possibility that it does not get, you know, accepted or funded.
I don't know, I would defer this one, because we've, we've already approved forty-seven-hundred dollars of yearly membership tonight for the online stalking thing. How many annual memberships, we're gonna be getting into hundreds of thousands of dollars of annual memberships to this thing and that thing, and...
You do have to pick and choose, so...
So, Chris, do you know what the six that didn't get funded did wrong? I mean, did it submit it late, or it was, you know, too, too off the wall, what they asked for, you don't know?
No, I don't know.
Obviously, the other one that we approved here tonight, that's gonna keep us out of litigation. This, it seems like we're only approving, or approving this thirty-five-hundred dollars to potentially get a vehicle that we're gonna buy anyways. I would...
Well, I would assume they do more grant, there's more grants available than just...
Yes, there are a lot of grants, so this is not, you know, this is just the first opportunity we have to apply. So Sergio also has had a lot of experience with this particular group. The city of Hobart has had a lot of success getting grants from this organization, or through this organization. The city of Hobart has had a compressed natural gas jet vac purchased, or at least assisted in the purchasing of that, for that city. They've had compressed natural gas fueling stations, I believe they've had electric vehicle charging stations, they've had compressed natural gas leaf vacs also purchased through there. And I believe they've also had their street garage, I'm just gonna, I don't know the technical term, but I'm gonna call it blast-proof. When you buy compressed natural gas vehicles, you have to blast-proof your, your storage facility for them, in case they do explode on the off-chance.
I would just defer this one, just because of the fact that, even if we're gonna apply for these natural gas vehicles, now you're gonna have to put in a fueling station for them, there's a big cost there, and we're not set up, I guess we can run down to Lake Central and use their natural gas, but... They're not gonna...
So the fifty thousand dollar car, so it, it's not gonna conform to kind of our fleet already, so...
It would, so it would be a hybrid vehicle, it would run off of gas and electric, so we would not need any additional charging or fueling stations for it.
So if I'm a betting man, so, and it's just a business decision, right, so, so we would have, if it's, this is thirty-five-hundred?
Yes.
That's what this is, okay, so if I take thirty-five-hundred, and it's a fifty thousand dollar payoff, right, so that's seven percent, so, and we have a seventy percent chance of winning, so I have ten times better odds going with the thirty-five-hundred dollar investment. I have ten times odds going in my favor, if I do go with the thirty-five-hundred of getting fifty, than the other way around. I'm just saying, if I was a betting man, I mean, this is a good, this is a reasonable and...
Worth a try.
Yes, reasonable way to go.
I've always lost in Vegas, so...
They help us, they help us write...
I'm just saying, if this, that's the odds, it's, it's ten times, ten times odds.
So they help us write the bid request?
They, they write it entirely. We have to provide some documentation that they would need, like a Dun's number, and I believe they're, they request a couple other small bits of documentation, but by and large, they do the heavy lifting.
Okay, so I don't see that in this list of RTPs.
It's not, I didn't see it either.
So since I don't see it in here, that means it's not on the docket for approval, which means we're gonna have to take this as a separate item. So gonna have to decide, do you wanna do this or not do this, and I think the best way to handle this is do it the way we handle all their business, and I will entertain a motion to accept membership in the South Shore Clean Cities organization for the cost of thirty-five-hundred dollars. Is there a motion for that? Anybody in favor of that? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mike, is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, Brian? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
So that's a four to one, so that is approved. All right. That, I believe, then brings us to the RTPs. Beth?
Well, I, I'd like to say one, Chris brought that up about Bob Velois leaving, and I forgot to say that, I did work with him, and I, I wanna thank him for his years of service and all the, the stuff that he's done for the town. I appreciate what Bob has done, and I wish him good luck on his new venture, and I'm sorry I didn't mention that before, but thank you again, Bob Velois.
Yeah, I think he was instrumental in helping us kinda design the skater system, which saved us a lot of money.
Right.
So, yeah, I do, do appreciate what Bob has done, so, yeah.
I'll go on, I had the pleasure of working with him as well, when I worked in Public Works for fifteen years, and I will miss seeing him around St. John.
All right. Beth?
So you have nine RTPs, two are from L. Warren Oil, two from Ferguson Water Works, Boonder Electric, Holland Asphalt, Lambert Concrete, Peerless Midwest, and Rico, totaling two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine point forty-six cents.
Questions on the RTPs? Then I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve the request to purchase as submitted by the clerk treasurer and authorize her to pay the same. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian's support. Wayne?
Second.
Already got Wayne in that one.
Okay.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved, five to zero. Item number eight, payment of the bills. We have in front of you the docket for one million, six hundred, seven thousand, nine hundred, seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents.
Almost.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. That is approved.